All right. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the January 26 Oshkosh Common Council. Please call the roll.
Muggerauer.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Ashel.
Here.
Ford.
Here.
Allison Osby.
Here.
Crosey.
Here.
Paul Mary.
Here.
Present seven.
And Councilmember Muggerauer will lead us in the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
We are mindful of the blessings of liberty that we have in this nation. May our decisions tonight improve the quality of life in our city and for our residents.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic, which is one nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So first, we have an introduction of Amy Fowles.
I'll turn it over to Museum Director Brad Larson.
Good evening, everyone. I hope Amy is on. I don't see her here, but Amy is the museum's new archivist. She joined the staff on January 4th, and she is responsible for managing the museum's extensive collection of photographs, film, and paper documents. It's a large collection, and it's very well utilized. Amy is from southeastern Wisconsin, and she has a bachelor's degree in history from Ripken College and two master's degrees from UW Milwaukee, one in history and the other in library and information studies. Amy's area of interest and expertise is in Wisconsin's logging and lumbering history, which fits very nicely with the museum's mission and with Oshkosh's past. And of note, Amy was the museum's summer intern in 2016 under Scott Cross. So she already has a familiarity with the museum archive. We're very happy to have Amy on staff.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Welcome, Amy.
Thank you. I'm very happy to be here.
Very nice. Thank you. And we have two presentations this evening. The Oshkosh Housing Authority Phase Two TIF Presentation for Waitrug Plaza. I believe Sue Van Halwigan is here from the Oshkosh Housing Authority. Sue?
Sorry. Okay, now I'm here. I appreciate the opportunity to come before the council to request for support of our tax incremental funding for Waitrug Plaza. This is the future home of the nonprofit Oshkosh Child Development Center, and there will also be a separate commercial storage facility. Can go to the next slide. Thank you. This, there are two parcels on this property, but what we're talking about tonight is just the north parcel. The south parcel has already been turned into 56 units of subsidized housing, part of public housing, and that was completed in March of 2019. So this project that we're talking about now will have about 28,000 square feet, two connected buildings for parking, storage. We are hoping to do solar panels on the roof. And then the big part of the project is the Child Development Center. So it's 30,000 square feet and seven connected buildings, which you'll see in just a minute. This daycare will be open for two shifts, full and part-time students, no contracts. And I'm gonna digress just a little bit, not following my notes like I should. Also with me on this Zoom video or this meeting is Ty Gerber. And Ty is the owner and owner and operator of the Gerber Child Development Center in Manasha. He's been running that two-shift daycare since 2012, very successfully, I might add. And he is what I've been telling people, I've got a guy. And this is the guy that's gonna run the daycare for us here in Oshkosh successfully. He comes with a lot of background in this, and like I said, he's been doing it successfully for a while. And he, where we see in this slide that we have in front of us on the Child Development Center, this is what we got from him, this is what he's doing and what he's doing successfully. It will be two shifts. It'll be open from 5:30 in the morning till 11:30 at night, full and part-time students. There will be no contracts. We will be also providing employment opportunity with reduced childcare fees. So people, families can work there. And we'll also be hiring higher wages. Our budget has in it right now, I believe, $15 an hour. And when I say benefits, I'm talking not necessarily healthcare. I am on another nonprofit board, and they literally have extremely low-paid people putting a dollar a paycheck into a 401K. So we're looking at what those benefits could be. It will also be a drop-in or short-stay programs, open when schools are closed, open when there's snow days. And it will also accept Wisconsin shares reimbursement and job training programs. Okay, next slide. So this is the parcel that you have in front of you that's highlighted in yellow. The dark black areas are what the roof area are what going to be the daycare, and the two silver buildings is the huge storage that we have in the back. There will be some storage carried over for tenants in the south building. That was part of the tax credit project that we would have storage. We do have it set up in the building right now. Nobody utilizes it because the units in the south building are so big. Next. And this, I just wanted to show you briefly, I apologize because the one that's actually highlighted in yellow around is the south building, and we're gonna focus on the north of that, where Section G, H, I, and L, those portions of the building qualify for historic credits. So when we get to the sources and uses, you'll see that we have two allocations for state and federal historic credits for that building. Next, please. This is just our future logo. It's just another to get us into the next phase of my presentation. We can go to the next slide. This is what the entrance to the center looks like now. And the next slide, please, is what it will look like. We have the drawings all done. We have some specs done. We are really pretty close to shovel-ready, other than we do realize that this, due to the fact that it took us longer to get the south building done, due to various complications and things that came up, we kinda had to put the daycare aside for a little bit to finish up the south. But our plans are ready. There'll be some adjustments due to new code changes that have come up since then. Next slide. And then this is just an interior drawing of what, they'll be separate. You can see there used to be garage doors or doors in the old building, and this is how the classroom will be set up. And those windows in this picture go out to the parking lot. Next slide. This is what will be, this is part of the southeast corner of the building. And we can move right into the next slide. And inside that building will be this gymnasium. There, in the bottom-left corner or to the left of this picture, will also be in that corner, the dining room area, there'll be a full industrial kitchen. Next. This, you drive by every day, or those of you who go on Harrison Street and see this really ugly-looking building. And so if you go to the next slide, this is what it will become. This is a indoor, or actually, excuse me, an outdoor-indoor area with garage doors. And that will open what you saw in that. This will not be heated, so the kids can be out there in their coats when it's a little cooler.
Excuse me, I'm so sorry to interrupt.
It's okay.
There's someone with background noise. Can you please mute yourself? It's very distracting. Thank you.
So this is the area that will not be heated, and those garage doors will go up so the children can be inside playing. It might even be raining straight coming down, and they can still be kinda sorta outside. Next, please. And this is just some interesting facts. We don't have to spend a lot of time on it, but 65% of young children, you know, all the parents are in the workforce. So they have a lot of factors that contribute to the lack of control with work schedules and having to change things around. So it's just an important factor in what we need to do to make sure we get some more daycare in the area. One fact that I apologize as I went back through my slides, somehow one of my best slides, which shows the lack of daycare in the northeast corner of Wisconsin, was missed in putting that out there. But I'd be more than happy to email that to the city or to the council members to give you that. When we did a daycare study, we documented where all the daycares were at the time. And honestly, I don't know if they're all still open, but there's really nothing in that northeast corner that is of this size. Next slide. This is the summary of the cash flow. Now, this was done, Tom Landgraf, who is our consultant, he was planning to join us. I don't know if he's come on since or not. But Tom is our consultant and development partner in this project. He and his partners Dimension Development have been with us since 2006 on all of our tax credits, seven tax credit projects that we have. So he, I don't think he's with us, but Tom and Ty put this cash flow analysis together based on Ty's numbers and then increasing it to when we are at full capacity. We are looking at 225 spots. This is, remember, this is a two-shift daycare, so it may seem like a lot of children, but honestly, that building can hold like 400. So this is the budget that we have going forward, and you can see the debt service coverage ratio at the bottom is good. And I don't know where I'm at my time, so I'm just gonna keep rolling here, and so we have questions. So you can go to the next slide. This is the sources and uses, and on the left side, you'll see the two historic federal and state estimates that we have for historic investor equity. Then we are looking at solar panels on the roof. And also, we will be applying for a WIDEC Community Development Grant. We are looking at the city for approximately 1.3 in TIF PEGO financing, long-term debt 6.6. And then the Housing Authority itself will be putting in $1 million based on the refinancing of another building that has just come out of the high-tech or the low-income housing tax credit from the investor back to ownership. So we're able to refinance that building to help with this project. The items on the other side, I won't go through all of those, but they're just your basic costs of what we need to do. Next slide. And that's it. I hope I made it in my 10 minutes. I thank you for listening, and I'll open up, you know, obviously, if you have questions for myself or for Ty.
Yes, thank you so much, Sue, for that presentation. This is a much-needed project and very exciting to see come through. Just one question, would you be able to forward us that slide about the gap in available childcare in northeast Wisconsin?
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you. Other council members have questions or comments? Councilmember Muggerauer.
Thank you, Mayor. No, I just wanna say, it looks like an exciting project. I think it's a very unique, obviously, with the public-private partnerships that you've been creating. Be, you know, supportive of that on that project. I think you guys did great on the Waitrug, you know, Phase One, and can't wait to see what Phase Two looks like. So like what I've seen so far.
Okay. Well, thanks again to the Housing Authority and for bringing this forth. It's an exciting project. We will move on now to the second presentation, Implementing Aquahawk Software. Ken Gabrielson and Ryan Lemke.
My name is Ryan Lemke with the City of Oshkosh Water Department.
And this is Ken Gabrielson, I'm the Financial Utility Manager for the City of Oshkosh. And we'd like to do a short little presentation on new software that we are going to be rolling out, hopefully, in the next few months called Aquahawk. Aquahawk will give our customers in the City of Oshkosh, the customers of this water utility, ability to track their water use, and also able to catch if they have used a large amount of water, maybe a water leak or something, they will be able to catch themselves and view the usage. On the screen, you can see, first of all, in the upper-left corner is the name of the customer and also the address, and also their account number and CID. The customers will be able to register for this service. It's no charge to the citizens of Oshkosh. And they will be able to register and set thresholds. So they are able to get notifications by either phone, email, or text when these thresholds are met. And these thresholds can be usage or it can be dollar amounts, depending on the thresholds they set up. In the upper-right, there's a help thing, and they have extensive help menu in this software. It explains everything, how to register, how to, how to view the different areas, how to set thresholds, and many things like, it shows you if you wanna look at a whole year's worth of usage or if you wanna look at a day's worth of usage, it's all really documented well in the help screen. Okay, right. So, okay, and in the middle, it talks about the current billing period. Now, you'll see it has, it'll have the customer's billing period. It'll have what day it is in the cycle. This one is day nine of 31. The estimated bill is the amount that you would owe right now in the cycle. For example, on day nine, this is what you would owe. The projected bill would be the amount, if you continued on the current path, that would be your projected bill. And like I said, it's a projection. It's not gonna be exact, but it will be a pretty close projection of it. And would you click on the, would you click on the, okay. Okay, this is broken out on how your water bill would be. So it talks about fixed charges, it talks about volume charges. It's broken out by water, sewer, fire protection, and stormwater. Then on the, where it says water use, you can click, and you can go from 100 cubic feet, which is the unit that we bill in, or you can go to gallons, which most people can relate to a little bit easier than 100 cubic feet.
So if you scroll down here to the bottom, you can actually see basically in real time your water usage. And if you hover over it, it'll tell you your water meter reports in at hour increments. Some of the older technology we have out there actually reports out in six-hour increments. So sometimes your graph may look a little different. But this one here we have up in front of us is on hour increments, and you can see as you kinda drag the cursor across, you can kinda track your usage and like at any time, if you wanna switch it back to 100 cubic feet, you can go back up here and click back, but most of the people can relate better to the, you know, the gallon usage. At any time, if you wanna kinda dial down and say, hey, look at this one over here, that's a pretty good spike. You can kinda zoom in, highlight, and then you can really kinda dial down and to see how many gallons of water you were using per hour based on what your meter is reporting. In conjunction with that, it's not as, not quite as important, but it is interesting to track during the summertime. It does show average temperature, rain precipitation. So if you are somebody who has a sprinkler system, you can kinda monitor. Hey, maybe we should cut back a little bit if there was a lot of rain forecast or the lot of rain predicted. We're kinda running our sprinklers when they might not be needed. In addition to that, sure.
How the fuck you change the goddamn mode?
Change the mode?
I think we have a guest who's not muted.
Okay.
Tony, are you able to mute them? Already done.
Okay, all right, so carrying on. So in addition to this, we have a thing that we use as a water utility. We have a technician that checks this daily, and we can go into the account management area. And this brings up every single account that is within the city-munis system. It automatically flags for us on a daily basis as it's loading here. High-risk users, yellow and orange, and categorizes them based on, you know, how much water they're using. So some of these top ones here, you can see are Oshkosh Correctional Bemis converters. Some of those thresholds have not been quite dialed in yet. So because they're using water basically 24/7, it kinda flags it as, hey, we should go look at it. But other than that, there are some other ones in there that we've actually had a lot of good luck with of notifying people of toilet leaks. It picks it up extremely fast. If you do sign up for your account through Aquahawk, that is all the thresholds that you can set yourself, whether you wanna do it monetary-wise, gallon usage, and then you can get notified and, you know, stay ahead of the things as much as you can. So with that, that's about all the options and things we have to show you. Does anybody have any questions?
Thanks for pointing out the option to switch over to gallons. And one thing I just wanna ask and clarify, it's my understanding that the water use is sometimes rounded up or down. Is that shown in here, and does it show your actual rate dependent, yes, does it show your actual rate?
The, so pretty much what this is kinda telling you is between the hours of 8:00 AM and 9:00 AM, I'm sorry, 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM, you had used 22.44 gallons of water. If you click on, you can actually click on your specific meter, and then this will actually give you the instantaneous meter reads. So for the 72-hour, it's loading, for the 72-hour basis, a screen that I just had up there, you can actually see, if you see where it says water reading of 1281, you can actually follow that across, and that'll actually change as your meter would move in the basement, pretty much. So it drops back in usage. So yes, it is pretty much as accurate as it can be, if you will.
Ryan, this is Mark. I have heard the same thing from what the mayor had just expressed, and I think the real question has to do with, it's more about a billing thing than an Aquahawk thing.
Sure, okay.
We round to the nearest 100 cubic feet.
Yes.
Can you explain that? Because some people have seen the same bill every month for many months because of their relatively consistent use over the course of the month. And now that we're doing monthly billing, people are seeing that, and they're like, well, how can that be right? I couldn't use the exact same amount of water, but rounded. It can be pretty consistent until you either flip up or flip down to the next 100 feet. So could you explain the billing process with the cubic 100 feet, either you or Ken?
No, Mark, this is Ken. Yes, when we round, we round up a reading at five and down at four. So there is a range of, I don't know if that's like of nine, I guess, in the water reading, that it could be the same billing amount, and you would still get the same usage. For example, if you would, when we take a reading, we, depending on the size of the meter, we move decimal places over to come up with the 100 cubic feet. So if we would come up with one that would end up to be 4.5, that would round to a five. We also could have a 5.4 that would round down to a five. So there is a pretty, there's a decent range that quite a few of our customers get consistent reads every month, and that is not uncommon at all. We'll have five or six months in a row where the same amount is billed. And sometimes they'll call, and we'll send them a report showing what their actual consumption is, and they'll see that, yes, their consumption did move in a range, but it happened to be within the rounded range that they got billed the same 100 cubic feet. Does that answer your question, Mark?
Yes, thank you.
I'll defer to the mayor. Because the mayor has been asked that question as well. So thank you. I appreciate, thank you, Mayor, for asking that.
Well, thank you for that presentation. This looks like an excellent tool. And for those who have an interest in monitoring, you know, their water usage for leaks or for conservation purposes, this looks like a very robust tool. Thank you.
We do have a few bugs right now, and that's why we're hoping to roll it out in the next few months. And we will have a little rollout. We'll have, we'll put some media notices out there showing that it'll be coming. So the customers will be able to sign up if they want to.
All right, then. Well, thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is Russ Fangampel.
Yes, Mr. Fangampel.
If any of the council members want to be part of a preliminary trial, I think you could get in touch with Ken, and he can help you get set up so that you could do this on a trial basis. It also helps Ken and Ryan get the bugs worked out of the system.
That would be great. I'm sure that some of us will do that.
You've just been asked to be guinea pigs, council members, but.
Untold, I believe, is the word.
Yes, actually decent, some good feedback is be well-welcome from people because it's one of those things we've been trying to work out, the bugs and the kinks here for a little bit of time. And I think we've got a really good product coming forward. It's just those last few, I'd say, 10% or so that we're struggling a little bit with yet, so hopefully soon.
All right, excellent. So let's see here. Next, we have citizen statements to council. And I wanna make the distinction, these are statements to council that relate to items that are not on the agenda. Following that, there will be public comments on agenda items. So if you signed up to speak on an agenda item, that will come following general statements. Pam, do we have anyone that registered to speak on general statements?
We do not.
All right, then. So we will move on to those who have registered for public comment on agenda items. Who do we have first?
Okay, for agenda item number 24, we have two individuals. Mary Ann Hoffer, 1103 East Parkway Avenue will begin.
All right, welcome, Mary Ann.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and esteemed council. I'm glad for this opportunity to speak to you. Seven years ago, more or less, we started a neighborhood association in Menominee South Neighborhood. I live at 1103 East Parkway Avenue, so I'm right in the middle of that neighborhood. And I have been involved with that organization since its inception. We have had very good participation from a number of people, either serious topics or social items. It's a good bunch, and it comes together better and better every year. Something like three, three-and-a-half years ago, we were encouraged to establish a neighborhood association plan from Menominee South Neighborhood Association. We met over the course of eight months. We really, really worked hard to hammer it out. And we came up with eight, four specific goals for our organization that we thought long and hard about, really tried to make a good plan. We have become very concerned about this Resolution 2150 to approve the land disposition of vacant property on the 600 block of Grove Street between Cleveland and Parkway Avenue, AKA the back part of the Bella Vista or Old Mercy Hospital lot, the part that runs along Grove Street there. A few years ago, our Neighborhood Association was very supportive of a Habitat for Humanity effort that came to fruition to put two housing units there on the corner of that block. But when this proposal came forward, we were given one opportunity to meet with the planning group that I am aware of, and it is a bit confusing because, of course, for the last year, there haven't been those sorts of meetings because we haven't been able to do that kind of public gathering. But our neighborhood group was not keen on the idea of putting a string of Habitat houses in that space. First of all, we already have a neighborhood garden in part of that space, and we were told it had to go. That's actually listed in two of our four goals as something that's very important to our neighborhood. And it's something that comes up over and over again. It's not just a place where people plant vegetables and flowers, but it's a place where people meet to socialize. It's a place where people wander through to take photos or to take small children through to explain to them about gardening. And unusual for our older part of the city, it's wide open, very sunny, and so it's a good. open, very sunny. And so it's, it's a good place to have a garden. Um, to add insult to injury, we were sent a memo telling us that there were several different places in the city you could put, that the city was encouraging people to put gardens, not one of them in our neighborhood association area. We already have a garden and that planning group just was not interested in, in honoring those efforts. Additionally, it just doesn't seem that they heard any of what we were trying to say. We have reasons for concern. We are working very hard to improve this neighborhood. We have one of the higher vacancy rates of any neighborhood association in the city. We have high population density. We have substandard housing that really should go. And so there's potential for a scattering of other lots. And may I say, a scattering of Habitat properties to go in other parts of the city as well, rather than plopping a whole group on us. Um, we don't mind, we certainly don't mind having Habitat neighbors, but to take a traditional neighborhood with good quality, solid quality housing stock and put a row of new in there just seems like an unwise choice. So I'd like to ask you to send it back and say, something better has to be worked out and it has to be worked out with the neighborhood association. We really, we want the city to live up to our side of the bargain. We've done our part in terms of, of being a neighborhood association. And we'd like the respect that we should get for all the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. And Pam, who is signed up next?
Our next speaker is Stephanie Pomeranian, 631 Grove Street.
Hi Stephanie, welcome.
Hi, thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm going to put my screen on. I teach high school kids and I know what it's like to look at a blank screen. So it's always nice to have a face. Um, so as Pam said, my name is Stephanie Pomeranian. Um, I just bought our beautiful house, um, in September with my husband and I love this neighborhood. Um, I grew up on the north side of town. I went to Oshkosh North High School and graduated there. I love this side of town. It was very important when we moved here to put stock into the side of town and, um, make our community a better, more cohesive place. I love the unique parks and businesses on our side of town and what it contributes to the city of Oshkosh, but I am extremely concerned, uh, with the proposed plans for the vacant lot on our street. Currently, the community garden serves more than just the proposed six homes. Um, as previously stated, it serves Parkway, um, Oak Street, the Bella Vista Gardens. It provides a little more privacy for those Bella Vista residents. Um, it provides outreach opportunities for Webster and Washington schools. It provides a lot more than just a garden. I do support Habitat for Humanity and its mission. And I support having Habitat Homes, but I implore the city to please look at other options than packing six homes in an extremely small lot. The proposed project currently would eliminate the community garden, but it would also negatively affect our neighborhood dynamic. One of the main reasons we bought our house was for the quietness of the neighborhood, the low traffic, volume of traffic, the closeness to our parks and other qualities. I'm greatly, greatly concerned with how six homes is going to change that dynamic. Statistically, these homes bring more street traffic, more foot traffic. Also statistically speaking, low income housing brings higher crime rate. As a young woman, I want to be able to continue to walk my dog at night safely and feel safe. This development, I am very concerned is going to lower our property value. I know that that's typically guaranteed, but I statistically and factually, that is not the case. Currently, we can see the park from our house and that would no longer be the case. We're able to enjoy produce and share it and teach lessons to my nieces and nephews about growing things. That would be eliminated. Um, there would be no more quiet refuge for some of the residents of Bella Vista. I guess I have questions for the council, just asking again to, to send back the original plans, ask for an environmental impact study. Also, I'd like more, um, information from Habitat about the sweat equity that would be required for homeowners or what types of home ownership classes that there would be. I have never seen, and I have questions on why we're shoving six houses in a, in a lot and where that's ever been done before and why that's being pushed. Why do we need to have six homes shoved together like that? I'd like to see statistics on that. Again, please, I'm just imploring the board, um, to consider all these potential harmful repercussions of building the proposed homes on this current vacant lot across from not just my house, but seven others. Please consider if you lived on this block, how you would feel as you're saying, I don't agree with this and it's not being heard or respected. There are other spaces that this vision can definitely come to fruition, but I'm extremely worried about this development. Losing sleep, anxiety, and talking to my neighbors, we are all very, very concerned. This is my very first home. We just bought it and, uh, I'm a proud North Side alum and I would really hope that our voice of the neighborhood and, um, I know other people wrote into some city, uh, council members. So I'm just, please asking that we're heard and respected. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Pam, do we have any other, uh, folks registered to speak on, uh, agenda items?
I do not, but we do have a couple of emails if you want to read those into the record.
Those are the ones that were in the orange folder, correct? I will note that, uh, Christopher Ulrich of 716 Irving sent a rather lengthy email, um, as a member of the Menominee South Neighborhood Association Steering Committee in opposition to this project, um, with a number of references to concerns about the, uh, quote unquote, cheap junk houses and problematic residents, then the surrounding homeowners will sell. Um, and I believe all council members received a copy of this as well as the, let me see if I can get back to the other one. From Linda Beaton, 1112 Merritt Avenue, uh, also regarding the Habitat Homes on Grove Street, um, remarked that Habitat is a great program, but, uh, has concerns about concentrated neighborhood development and that, um, it was created for folks to get a leg up and enable them to own a home. Um, planning to put multiple Habitat Homes, also concerned about the number and enabling people to label the block as welfare, low income, subsidized, and other names that will not help folks be socially accepted. Uh, had concerns about whether the home would be flipped. Those are the two items that we received in our orange folders regarding this item.
I apologize for speaking out. I did not know the proper, uh, for registering. This is Tom Simon, the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. I apologize. May I speak?
Um, Mr. Simon, uh, let me just check in with council typically, uh, when we get to that agenda item, but certainly, um, is council open to having Mr. Simon speak now? Or would you prefer when we get to that agenda item?
I think it's appropriate he speaks now is when it's kind of supposed to happen. And if we need to call him back, we can.
Will you, will you be available later also, Tom?
Yes.
Okay. Please go ahead.
Mayor, Mr. Simon, if I could get your address, please. This is the clerk.
Yes, I'm, I'm in the Executive Director of Habitat for Humanity. Our address for our affiliate is 2559 Badger Avenue, Oshkosh.
Thank you.
Right, if I may.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Simon.
Yes, thank you. The Grove Street project is something that has been wanting to be developed since 2015. I respect the neighborhood associations, but they were included on PowerPoint that were given to the community in 2015. It's been known since 2015 that there were development plans for this block. The community garden was allowed in as a temporary thing while the development was being in. We have done everything in our power to work, to try to keep the garden as long as possible. It was never planned to be a permanent part of this. This is a TIP district. The city has an obligation to develop the land for the highest and best use that it can. I also wanted to bring up that we have built 39 homes in Oshkosh for Habitat for Humanity. The collective net worth of those homes is over $6 million. We are just completing this Friday, less than two blocks from Grove Street, a home at 1302 Eastman, that appraised at $155,000 as a new build, with the appraiser remarking that very few neighborhoods in Oshkosh are having new construction added to it. In working with the neighborhood association, our phone does work. We tested it today. We were never contacted by the neighborhood association. We have been hearing of problems with the neighbors. I will be meeting with the owners of the twindo across the street that many, I do not believe they have ever been invited to a neighborhood association meeting. They are two homeowners within the neighborhood association. And I apologize if invitations have been put to them. I'd like to really integrate them working with the neighborhood association. People have remarked of this as a low income development. There will be six individual family homes, new construction. Why six? Because they will align perfectly with the houses across the street from them. There are seven houses down the other side of the block. Why wouldn't we have the same number on the opposite side of the block? The value of the twindo is according to Zillow is near 160 to 170 some thousand dollars in line with the cost of the appraisal of the homes around the twindo. Habitat has a vested interest in making this work. We wish to work with the neighborhood association. The phone worked. Why did you send these emails straight to the council? Why does Habitat not contact as part of this process? I would also like to just say that we say low income. Our last homeowner, the one that we're dedicating the homeworks third shift at Aurora, she is working in the unit with COVID patients. The governor sent them a citation for their heroicism in helping patients. You could call her a hero or you could call her low income. The homeowner just before at 9:40, Fourth Avenue is considered a central worker and is getting hazard pay at QuickTrip. The homeowner right next to her, we have multiple locations in the city with Habitat Homes right next to them, works as an auto technician, an essential worker, or you could call him low income. Habitat in Fox Cities, where I've worked for 10 years prior to coming to here, built a subdivision of 13 Habitat Homes that added over $3 million to that section of the city. In Green Bay, a Habitat subdivision of seven homes was, was built. It, as I have mentioned in Oshkosh, we have multiple locations with Habitat Homes right next to each other. I can freely understand when anyone has lived on a street where there's an open lot across from it. Anyone is anxious to know who their neighbors would be. We tell you they will be six great families. They will be active part of the neighborhood association. Invite them and this will be a great neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. All right. And we have no further registered folks or do we have someone else? I, I think I saw a Ms. Beaton, uh, who matches the name of one of the emails, uh, on the call. Uh, did, did Ms. Beaton register to speak also?
No, she did not.
Okay. Thank you. So we will address this item in the order that it is on the agenda. And, uh, thank you everyone for your comments. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have anyone registered to speak on consent?
No, we do not.
All right. We'll take a motion in a second for consent.
Moved.
Second.
Deputy Mayor Crowsey, Councilmember Mugerhour. All right. Any discussion on consent agenda items?
Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Mugerhour, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, actually, it's just a statement regarding, uh, number 1121-37. And this is, uh, more directed to our public work staff. Um, but I'm very happy to see multiple bids. In fact, I think it was seven came in for the construction project, the West Ninth Ave reconstruction, uh, well below what we expected and budgeted. That's always music to my ears. Uh, so thank you, James and staff for, for, uh, well, for your work in getting us those numbers. So I just wanted to acknowledge that, uh, uh, we had quite the turnout for that project. And I think it had to do with some early timing on bidding, if that's correct, Mr. James, uh, Mr. Robbie?
Uh, yes, it's, um, a little bit earlier than we normally get our first project out. And also, you know, from what we are seeing with contractors, you know, there's, there's still a little bit of a lull out there, um, from some projects that have been postponed and delayed. So, uh, yes, I, I think it was six bids that we received on this project, which is more than normal on a street reconstruction project. But I, I think it was anticipated, uh, based on what we're hearing from contractors.
Excellent to hear. Thanks for sharing, Mr. Robbie.
All right. Uh, I have one item. I'm sorry. Do other council members have any questions or discussion on consent? I just have one question. I think I saw Kathy Snell here earlier. Is she with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, hi Kathy. Um, uh, just a question regarding the, um, special event 2142. Uh, it's the Oshkosh Cultural Fine Arts and Jazz Society to utilize North Main Street and Opera House Square for the Oshkosh Jazz Festival. Um, I did not see who the applicant was in the application that was in our, um, our packet. And I apologize, I did not catch that until now. Uh, are you able to identify who the applicant is? It was my understanding that the Oshkosh Cultural Fine Arts and Jazz, uh, Society was holding their, um, event in another location.
Uh, the applicant's name on the application is Agnes Payne as the primary contact. I am not aware of them. They have discussed alternate, um, places, but this is the application that they submitted. If they are to change their application, it would have to come back to council as an amended, um, amended resolution. At this time, I have not been informed of them changing locations.
All right. Because it was my understanding that location was, uh, over at the, uh, Lakeshore Park area. Um, is Agnes here with us by chance? Just to clarify.
Believe so. I did notify her in advance that this was going to council as she submitted it. And I did not have any information back from her.
All right. Well, um, we will move forward as it is. And please call the role on consent agenda items, please.
Mugerhour?
Aye.
Kristen?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Jerry Seven?
All right. Next we have a pending ordinance 2146 approved zone change from single family residential five district SR5 to single family residential five district with a planned development overlay SR5 PD at the southeast corner of Linden Oaks Drive and West Ninth Avenue. Uh, did, I, I'm not seeing, this has already gone to plan commission, correct?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Was there no recommendation from plan commission? I don't see it on the agenda. Mr. Ford, maybe?
Yeah, we recommended approval.
Okay. All right. Probably just a clerical thing.
Yeah. Well, the resolution says plan commission recommendation approved. And Mr. Lyons has written a letter on page. And Mr. Lyons has written a letter on page one ninety.
Yeah, I see that in the packet now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone registered to speak on this item?
No one is registered.
All right, we'll take a motion and a second.
I move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Ford and Erickson. Discussion. Mr. Davis, do you, or Mr. Lyons, do you want to give a brief statement of the project?
Yeah, this is a zone change to add a planned development overlay to the existing single-family residential district for construction of the Pocket Neighborhood. A little later on the agenda, we also have the planned development that goes with it. So now this is a little bit of a unique development style from what we traditionally do in the city of Oshkosh. It's a neighborhood that's being developed on a single parcel, so we're using the planned development overlay to address the unique nature of the project.
And thank you. And just for public consumption, how many units will be there?
I think it's fifty-two?
Fifty-two?
I can double check her quickly.
I think there was a question earlier about a number of units on a block and on a parcel, so just wanted to ask and point that out.
Yep, these are all, excuse me, forty single-family homes would be built as part of the development.
All right, thank you. Councilmembers, anybody else? All right, please call the roll.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Ospe?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
All right, next we have two new ordinances. There will be no action this evening. The first one, twenty-one forty-seven, is to amend parking regulations on Grand Street and Eighth Avenue. And is Mr. Collins here, or someone that would like to speak to what those parking regulations changes are?
Sure, thanks, Madam Mayor. I can tell you real quick. It's just Grand Street, there is, the street's only, it's, this section is only eighteen feet wide, so there are a couple driveways that we're just removing a small section of parking so that those driveways can be accessed. There's some residents that are having issues with cars parked, and they can't get into their driveways. And then the Eighth Avenue, that's just east of Main Street where the buildings were raised, so we're just removing the regulations there. They're old regulations that were back from when there were businesses in that area.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And again, there's no action on this item. Twenty-one dash forty-eight, amend ordinances, setting interest rate for special assessment payment plans. Perhaps Mr. Van Gompoe would like to address this, followed by some of our long-range finance folks. Mr. Van Gompoe, are you muted, maybe?
That's okay, it's trying to get my video going as well.
Thank you.
Basically, this was an item brought forward to the Long Range Finance Committee, so I would ask Councilmember Mugrower or Ford if they have any other comments. But what we're really doing is lowering the special assessment interest rate for new projects that are certified in twenty twenty-one down to four percent.
Councilmember Mugrower?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this comes from a discussion that council had, I think, middle part of twenty twenty. And it stems from, you know, citizens engaging with their leaders here in Oshkosh. You know, every so often we'll hear from property owners that the six percent interest rate that the city charges for special assessments is a little high, and that they felt it, you know, might be too profitable for the city. I can assure you it wasn't, but that it was definitely worthy of us having a discussion on if that rate should be a little bit lower, or what it should look like. So council asked the Senate for long-range finance. Finance took it up. We had a good discussion. I know Mr. Ford was there for that one, too. But in the end, you know, they talked about other communities of similar size and what they're doing, or neighboring communities, what they're doing. And felt that a little bit lower interest rate would be in line with what's happening in the marketplace for our debt. Right now, we're bonding out very, very well. Under two percent, or slightly above sometimes over the last couple of years, and that it wouldn't be detrimental to our finances at the city level to lower it a bit. So we're coming back with four percent, and I suspect council will be accepting that, I think. Mr. Ford, what do you, you got anything to add?
I would just add that long-range finance was unanimous in approving that recommendation.
I guess I just had one follow-up question, and that is, if we're borrowing at a significantly lower rate, what is the thought behind it still being that much higher? What is our typical borrowing rate right now?
So you want that?
Sure, I'll start. It's actually, I think, page two sixteen of your, or two fifteen and two sixteen of your packet. I had outlined for the Long Range Finance Committee and for council, the interest rates of the various debt issuance from two thousand seventeen through two thousand twenty. And Madam Mayor, the Long Range Finance Committee talked about a kind of a margin of two percent, and that margin of two percent is necessary to kind of offset our cost of administering special assessments. So if you take where our interest rate is, round it up to two, add two, that's where, how they came up with a four percent.
Well, thanks for giving that explanation. Again, there's no action on this item tonight. Did anybody else have any questions or comments on this item? All right, thank you. We'll move on to new resolutions. Thank you, Mr. Van Gompoe.
No problem.
All right, resolution twenty-one dash forty-nine, approve conditional use permit for an adaptive reuse at five forty-four West Seventeenth Avenue. Is there anyone present who has submitted any statements on this item? All right.
Yeah, this is Spencer Morse, the petitioner.
Okay, are you here for answering questions if there are any, or did you have a statement you wanted to make regarding this item?
I guess I just wanted to, Madam Mayor, time in the council, yeah, we're here to answer any questions. Also on the line is Doug Post, the other owner of Paddle Cider Works, we hope to be operators soon. We have very supportive friends. Mike and Stephanie own this property. And we're just looking to start a kind of a hobby turned business, Nano Winery. You know, someday we hope to be in the Sawdust District, you know, in a bigger location, but this is kind of a proof of concept. We're really excited about being in this neighborhood. We, you know, we see the neighborhood as being, you know, just a perfect location to start this. We're very respectful of that neighborhood, so. And then, you know, lastly, you know, I just want to say that, you know, whatever questions you guys have, we're here to answer them. One administrative thing I did notice on the resolution, the first page, it did mention Monroe Street address. I don't know if that matters at all, be fixed. Other than that, we're excited about Aqua Hawk as water users, and we'll open up to any questions you guys have.
All right, I'm just looking, I see that it is a clerical error on the resolution that references a CUP for an adaptive reuse at thirteen thirty-two Monroe. If that could be corrected. Do we have a motion and a second on this item?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, Councilmember Mugrower and Ford, discussion. Councilmember Mugrower.
Thank you, Mayor. Since the applicant's here, just thought I'd say, you know, I think it's a great reuse of that property. Trying to reintegrate something new into that older space, as well as trying to be respectful, as you mentioned, of the neighborhood. Wish you luck. You got a yes vote for me, and I hope you all the best, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ford?
I mean, I guess I liked all that. It's a really cool project. It's great to see it happening in that neighborhood, and I do want to commend the applicants for being really well-prepared at plan commission and making this really, really easy to approve.
Thank you.
All right. Very good. City Attorney Lawrence, and just, I guess, a parliamentary question here with that resolution having incorrect addresses. Can that be administratively handled after the fact?
Yes, the city clerk under the ordinances can make that correction.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, please call the roll on twenty-one forty-nine.
Mugrower?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Paschal?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Ospe?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Hall Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven?
All right, next is twenty-one dash fifty, approve land disposition of vacant property at the six hundred block of Grove Street between Cleveland Avenue and Parkway Avenue. Approved development agreement with Oshkosh Habitat for Humanity. And we had heard from folks earlier, as well as a few emails on this item. Mr. Simon, I assume, is still with us for questions. Can we have a motion and a second?
To move.
All right, so I saw Councilmember Erickson, and was that Ford? Or Mugrower? Oh, Paschal. Okay, Erickson and Paschal, thank you. All right, discussion. Councilmember Ford?
Sorry, happy to get us started here. I just want to point out a few of the, react to a few of the comments that were made earlier tonight and point out that at plan commission, we had a really nice discussion about this, and hopefully to relieve some of the concerns of residents, it was explained to us by Habitat for Humanity that there are significant, significant sweat equity requirements that go in into getting a home. They assured us that it would be in character with the neighborhood. They assured us that they would work with the Neighborhood Association moving forward every step of the way. So certainly, that would be, that would be my expectation as one council member, but I do think that there is huge value to this, to this project, and I do have confidence in what Mr. Simon had to say, that in twenty years, we'll have no idea that this was some sort of Habitat development. I mean, this is just a development that happens to be done by Habitat for Humanity, so thank you.
All right, other council members. Councilmember Erickson, please.
Thank you. Just two questions, I think, for staff. Could you just talk about kind of what the timeline has been with communicating with residents from the Neighborhood Association, what the timeline has looked like for this project and the history?
This is Alan Figgitt, and I can start the discussion, and I think Mr. Lyons and Ms. Brandt are also on the line to fill in a lot of the gaps. This has been a project that's been discussed, probably for the last five years, since the city has owned the property. The first phase was the Twin Dominion project, which people have referenced, which is at the southern end of the property. That was basically a two-unit condominium that was built, that's handicapped accessible, and met all the requirements for UDC, but we also, and accessibility, but also incorporated the neighborhood conference into the design. So I think we were going to be using that as the model for future houses along that frontage of Grove Street. It seemed to be pretty well-received at that point, and I think Habitat was happy with the results, and that's why they approached the city about continuing with additional single-family homes the rest of that blockface. There have been issues on that property with redevelopment, largely because it's an old site that contained some of the Mercy infrastructure. So the community garden was a good interim use, and the city does promote the use of community gardens as well. But they've always been an interim use. We don't have a permanent community garden in our inventory, at least through community development at this point. And then beyond that, the staff has worked with Habitat to make sure that all the requirements for development would be met, and I know staff met pre-COVID with the neighborhood, and I think I might turn that over to Ms. Brandt. And then most recently, the conditional use permit, I'm sorry, the land disposition sent out the notice to the neighbors most recently in the last couple of months, so that's why it's probably so prominent right now. Ms. Brandt, if you could explain what was going on with the Neighborhood Association back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, perhaps?
Yes, this is Darlene Brandt. The Stephen Wiley, principal planner with the city, and myself met with the Neighborhood Association. I believe it was twenty eighteen or so. It was right after the twindo's were constructed. And we indicated at that time that Habitat would be developing the rest of that block frontage. Some of the neighborhood members present supported it, others did not. Similar to what council has heard this evening. But it's been Habitat's objective since the twindle project started with a collaborative effort between the city, the Winnebago County Housing Authority, and Habitat to build the twindo's. That Habitat wanted to build the rest of that block frontage with affordable housing for new home ownership in the community.
All right, thank you for that. And I would like to, I would like to ask a question of the planning department, or Mr. Davis. Are there any conflicts in the neighborhood plan goals? I'm presuming that, you know, staff reviewed the neighborhood plan that would be in conflict in terms of this project?
As the housing project? No, I do not believe there's any conflict with the goals. They are correct. They'd like to have a community garden, and we'd love to find a location for a permanent community garden in that neighborhood, but as people have indicated, it's a relatively dense area, so it's difficult to find a good-sized lot that would be permanently available for a community garden.
Have, you know, I want to, I want to say to the neighbors, I've had conversations with many of you over the last couple of years about this, and this is not new news, right? We've had these conversations. Some of, some of you are new, but I've shared with you some of the Middle Village, you know, and some of the, what's now Midtown Neighborhood Association. It was not formal at that time, experienced a similar situation on Jefferson Street. Three years of hard work, a lot of sweat equity, a lot of social capital built, but we always knew it was temporary. But we hoped, we hoped that we could continue to use it, and then there was a developer who came along who put in, you know, for this, and so I empathize with the loss of the garden. But I also think that presents an opportunity. It's my understanding that Stevens Park Community Garden is part of the park, and it is permanent. And I don't know if staff has had any further conversations with the neighbors about the potential of perhaps some area on Menominee Park or some other area. I know that the redevelopment authority just recently put out a request regarding five parcels throughout the city. I think four out of the five are perhaps on the northeast quadrant, maybe not as close in proximity. But the other thing that I guess I want to speak to is, you know, there are folks on here that I know that are good people, but I'm so disappointed in some of the language that's been used. The Habitat neighbors, the low-income, and I wouldn't even necessarily read some of the other things that The Habitat neighbors, the low-income, and I wouldn't even necessarily read some of the other things that came in the email. It's like less than welcoming, less than inclusive, less than neighborly. It, it's very disappointing, but I, I do respect that this is something that you may not want to see. What I noticed is some of the addresses that these came from, the homes that Habitat will be building with garages will be valued higher than some of those existing homes. So it will rise the neighborhood. It will not take the neighborhood down. And so I just ask you to look in your heart and think about how you can welcome new families. Let's see here. I see that there's someone who is trying to request to speak in the chat, and the chat is only for technical issues. So I believe, you know, there are other folks who would like to speak to this, and I'm going to reserve the rest of my comments for my fellow council members to weigh in on this. Councilmember Mugrauer.
Madam Mayor, actually, I have two very quick questions for Mr. Simon, and then I have, have some comments. Mr. Simon, if you wouldn't mind, only because you referenced property values of some of your other developments, and as well as a few of the individuals that spoke tonight, and some of the emails we've received have referenced property values. What's the anticipated value of just one of these? Obviously, they're all going to be nearly the same, but what's the anticipated value that you would expect from one of these?
Yes, thank you very much. And I'm sorry with the technology, I'm not very gifted with this, so I hope you can see me clearly.
Yep, you're good.
And if I could just proceed by my, I apologize to the neighbors, and when Ms. Paul Mary was reading the emails, I'm sorry, I just took it kind of personally. I'm Irish, and I, it was unfair to the neighbors who are asking questions about this. It was the first that I had seen those, and if you heard it from somebody who was a Habitat person, I just got my gander up. And so I apologize to the neighbors of the neighborhood for their concerns. But asking on your specific question, I can tell you that we just appraised the home that is being built on Eastman that is very comparable to the homes that we have built. It just appraised at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I think that that is reasonable, what the starting value is of these homes. I think that we anticipate that the values will probably, the Habitat homes have been rising in value across the city. I think that by the time they are built, they will probably be in the one sixty to one sixty-five range.
Appreciate it.
And just one last, if I.
No, you're good.
We will be doing this not all at once. What people forget about Habitat homeownership is the homeowner builds the home with us, and they select the lot. We have other, we have a property at Mount Vernon as well in the city of Oshkosh, and we are acquiring other places. So the homeowner gets a choice of where they want to live. We do believe that many of them will want to live on Grove Street because it is a nice neighborhood. So I assure the neighbors that it won't be six homes built all at once. It will be over time as well. And they will each be an individual home, not the same style.
Perfect. So that was actually my second question there. So I appreciate you actually went where I was going to go with that one. So thank you for answering both of those. You know, it's not often, and I say this jokingly, but it's not often the mayor and I completely agree on an issue or completely have the same sentiments, but Mayor, Madam Mayor shared darn near the exact same sentiments that I was going to share in terms of my disappointment in some of the, the statements and some of the comments that we've heard from some of the residents. Definitely not, I think her words were inclusive and welcoming, and I second what, what she noted there. You know, Mr. Simon also noted and made a good comment about it is the city's responsibility for this vacant land, for us to make the highest and best use of that, that, of that vacant land. And that while the community garden is a, a neighborhood treasure at the moment, a valuable thing within the neighborhood, it is only temporary, and that is by design, because it is incumbent upon us to try to get rid of these vacant parcels of land for future developments. And so I'm very supportive of this. I wish the neighbors would take a step back and move off the position of we support Habitat, but just not in our neighborhood. That's, that's not very welcoming. Mr. Simon, as he mentions, this is a, and as the development agreement mentions, this is going to be over a time, you know, six to eight years potentially. But it's, it's all based upon demand, so it's not like in six months, you're going to have six homes across the street filling that block in. So very supportive of it. I wish the neighbors would jump on board, and the Neighborhood Association would be a little bit more welcoming. And I hope that they take this opportunity to do so. So that's, that's all I have to say on this one.
Thank you, Councilmember Mugrauer. Other council members wish to speak? Councilmember Paschal.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Simon, if you would take another question, that would be wonderful.
Yes, thank you.
Sure. So what is, so, so you choose a family. There's a process for choosing a family, correct?
Yes.
And then, once that family is chosen, they have to put in a certain amount of hours of sweat equity, along with all the other collaborating partners in the, in the project as well. But what, what's the long-term plan that Habitat commits to when they, when, when they provide support and a home to a Habitat family?
Excellent question. I'll try to give you as brief an overview of the Habitat process as possible. I've been the executive director here of Habitat Oshkosh for, this is now my third year. We're copying the plan that is Fox Cities Habitat just up the road. I worked there for six and a half years. That, that was one of the most successful in the Habitat world. We do our taking of applications from April fifteenth through June fifteenth of every year. We have a family selection committee that works with each of the applicant families. There is an extensive process where we rate the families on a variety of things. The families are making thirty to sixty percent of the county median regional income. There are figures, hard figures. They're all soft, soft ascertainment goals, as we say, is their willingness to partner, to be active participants in their, in their neighborhood. We will then choose between those, our top candidates, they're approved by the board. It is a thirteen to fifteen-month process of when you are selected to when you build your home. You have to put in at least two hundred and fifty to three hundred and fifty hours of sweat equity, depending on your family size. We do do classes on financial education, budgeting, and now we are increasing modules on how to be a good neighbor, how to be a good homeowner. We work with the families, they build their personal, their property with us. We do it with trained Habitat staff. Rob Rapi is one of the best construction managers in the Habitat world. He's been with our staff since the twindle, actually. So I think that going on with that, then post, we are trying to now do a program where we go back to our homeowners. We have received issues concerning the twindle before. I'm actually meeting with the twindle owners tomorrow evening on a conference call. We are working with the, the twindle owners. We actually have an agenda item, how do I become part of my Neighborhood Association? So I think from the homeowner's perspective, I really do think that it's fears rather than the reality. And I really hope that this is an opportunity where we can work with them. I really think that if you met any, especially the families that we've worked with recently, you would really want them as a neighbor. Have I answered you? That is the Habitat process. Is there anything more that information I could provide?
No, I, I think you did a great job describing it. I, I was actually amazed that you said it's like a thirteen-month process to get to, you know, the point of training and, you know, the point of, of getting to the house and all that stuff. So, so that's amazing to me, especially in a world of, you know, in real estate where we can turn around, you know, purchase a house and within three months' time be closing on it and moving in it. You know, these are families that are putting in a long haul, sometimes almost two years before they actually move into the house as well in regards to training. So I think that's worth noting in regards to, you know, how, how Habitat goes about creating their, you know, their, their homes and their, and the communities that are going to utilize them. So, so I actually live in the Menominee South neighborhood. And, and, and I've lived there for, I think I've gone in my fourth year. I've, I've had minimal involvement with the neighborhood, my, with the Neighborhood Association myself. And so to me, it's important that, that our community understands that the process that Habitat and the city, city of Oshkosh are taking is, is really an inclusive process in regards to creating a leg up for the person who is, who is going to seek ownership of that home. So I think it's really important to be inclusive and to be inviting through all of this process. And I don't necessarily think that the neighbors that spoke tonight, that their, that their intentions are to be negative towards Habitat or negative towards the potential persons that are living there. I think when we package this resolution tonight, the idea, I think maybe it's the idea of the six homes, you know, being jam-packed onto what is a very suitable lot for six homes, but that's a big change for that neighborhood. I remember back in two thousand and ten, the former owner of those properties wanted to put much larger homes on that, on that smaller lot. And there was also some, you know, the, the neighbors weren't necessarily accepting of that as well and such. And so, so it's definitely a process that I think that we need to commit to within all of that. My hope is that city staff and Habitat and the neighborhood find several ways over the next six to eight years to communicate and work together in regards to what you're doing. You know, again, it's one house at a time. It's, it's one family at a time that we're working with. My final question for you, Mr. Simon, is what is the positive? What is, what is the rate of ownership, say, from, from the time of purchase of the home, when that's finalized, to when your, when you, when your loans come to fruition with, with most of the families?
Yes.
Is there turnover?
Yes, would be the brief answer. And frankly, I was doing my quarterly production report, so I can tell you these things. We have built currently thirty-eight homes are completed in Oshkosh. Eight of our homeowners have sold their property. After a certain time period, Habitat homeowners are homeowners. They may sell their property. Each of those homeowners sold their property for a fairly significant appreciation. They are paying zero percent mortgages that are over thirty years, based on what they can afford. Those mortgages payments remain constant. So eight have sold, and additional eight have completed their whole payment of their mortgage. They were making additional payments beyond their required down payment. And since we've been here since nineteen eighty-nine, I believe the total is eight of them have paid off the thirty-year mortgage and have owned the home outright. Right now, if I'm doing my math correct, and I apologize, I'm doing this on the spot, there are still twenty-some that are in the process of paying. And we just ran a report, and of those, only one was behind on payment. They've done remarkable during this time, during the pandemic crisis of making their payments. And finally, to just to go to the neighborhood again, is we understand this is a big change. But I would agree, the homes will appreciate in value. We're working with the homeowners to take care of the homes. And our homeowners have a vested interest in taking care of their homes. It's one of their biggest assets that they're building equity in.
Excuse me, Mr. Simon, I'm sorry. Neighbors, the chat feature is not available for side conversations. That's a violation of public meetings. The side chat is only available for technical. I know this is a, a new tool for us to use, but I just ask that you respect that rule. Thank you. All right, Mr. Simon, did you have anything further? I just want to make a couple of closing points here, and that is there are twin dominiums directly south, maybe a little bit diagonal, from this lot. Those are newer twin dominiums, and I don't remember if there are six or eight. And, and I've heard no complaints when those went in. I think it was indicated earlier, the six units would be mirroring the other side of the street. But what I want to under, what I want to say is that, yes, we understand those lots have been vacant for some time. And we often hear from neighbors when there have been lots that have been vacant for a period of time, and then they go on to be developed because our eyes are used to looking at that open space. And we kind of have grown to think of that as our open space until something gets built. And I also understand that right now, there's only one twindle on that corner. And when you live on a corner, you're in a fishbowl. Everybody can see everything, right? And so, you know, perhaps there have been, you know, some lessons learned in some of the design. And I think there was some mention about potential screening and, and privacy amenities, along with garages and things like that for these new homes. I just want to say, I shared a driveway with our neighbor, Lyle, a World War II vet for many years. And I learned a lot from him. He was the kindest neighbor, no matter where you came from, what your means were. And I think that we could all learn from Lyle's grace that even those who we may not know coming into the neighborhood can be welcomed. And I, I would really hope that our Oshkosh neighbors are, are better than this. I would ask, can, can staff do a little bit of work with the Neighborhood Association on perhaps some alternatives for their community garden? Because I also understand the loss of that and how much work has gone into it. Are there other options in addition to the community garden plots that are out for RFP? You know, perhaps something with the, the, the Parks Department?
Without getting into details, I think the short answer, Madam Mayor, is yes, we'd be happy to work with the Neighborhood Association on what alternatives may be out there. The dis, the action tonight is to, you know, transfer the property over to Habitat for Humanity, and maybe even Habitat could have that discussion. Don't want to put Mr. Simon on the spot, because this is my first time meeting him, so I don't want to unfairly put him on the spot. But, you know, there's always opportunities. Even though the community gardens are, are a means to an end with, with trying to get neighborhoods engaged, they're clearly valuable to the neighbors, and anything we can do to facilitate those things, you know, we'll try.
Thank you very much. All right, are we ready to vote on this item? Councilmember Paschal.
Sure, thank you. My comment actually kind of relate to what Mark just kind of indicated at. In a, in a way to kind of address the, the comment that was provided to us in, in chat is that I, is that I was wondering if there was an opportunity for Mr. Simon and members of the Neighborhood Association to kind of meet or discuss, have a Zoom meeting about, you know, the potential timeline a little bit more, and the potential short-term use, continued use of that area.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Paschal, I, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. I just need to do a, a point of clarification with City Attorney. Given that that question that's being addressed came in through the chat and the public, has that had a chance to see that? Can we respond to that?
I don't think we need to get into a legal conversation about it. I think Mr. Simon understands, and I think the, the neighborhood understands what I'm trying to get to. So just wanting to put that out there, that, that could go a long ways to creating an open conversation and reducing some of the angst that might be being felt right now. So, thank you.
I want to make sure council members get full opportunity here. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, please take the roll on twenty-one dash fifty.
Mugrour?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
All right, thank you. Thank you to everybody for your participation. All right, twenty-one dash fifty-one, approve amendment to Community Development Block Grant, two thousand twenty Action Plan and Citizen Participation Plan related to CARES Act funding. Take a motion and a second on this item.
Still moved.
Second.
All right, Mugrour and Erickson, thank you. Discussion on twenty-one dash fifty-one. Seeing none, please take the roll.
Mugrour?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peschel?
Unmute, Bob.
Trying. Aye.
Thank you.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
All right, twenty-one dash fifty-two, approve amendment to TID number thirty-seven, Tax Incremental Finance Development Agreement with Rogan Shoes, Oshkosh Refurb Inc. and Masters Oshkosh LLC for the redevelopment of Aviation Plaza. Approved consent to property transfer for Rogan Shoes, Inc. Take a motion and a second.
So moved?
Peschel and Mugrour. All right, discussion on twenty-one fifty-two. Councilmember Mugrour.
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, I'm going to invite Mr. Davis, I think, onto the call. And, um, I'll set him up with, um, Mr. Davis, if you wouldn't just might explain for those at home, but in nutshell, um, the redevelopment costed a little bit more. Our agreement with the developers and the redevelopers states that if it costs a little bit more, they have the opportunity to receive a little bit more, and that's why we're here tonight, roughly.
Yes, that is correct. Uh, if you recall, we, we are assisting them in some of the obstacles to redevelop that site. That was stormwater, sewer water, street improvements. Uh, so we provided the best estimate we had prior to the development in the development agreement and had that apportioned out. And based on the actual costs, uh, that we have reviewed with the, the developers, uh, there were additional costs of about two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that are going to be reallocated within the development agreements.
Councilmember Ford?
Mr. Davis, and just, so I'm understanding this, this will still close earlier, correct? This TID? Um, my reading of the reports, it's still scheduled to close well before its useful or allowable life?
Yes, uh, this one could go as long as twenty-seven years, but I believe we're expecting this to be done in twelve, so.
Thank you.
All right. Any other conver, uh, discussion on this? As seeing none, please take the roll.
Mugrour?
Unmute, Matt.
Aye.
There you are.
Erickson?
Aye. Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
All right, next is, uh, twenty-one dash fifty-three, approve general development plan and specific implementation plan for a pocket neighborhood at the southeast corner of West Ninth Avenue, and Lyndon Oaks Drive Plan Commission recommends approval. Need a motion and a second on this item.
Still moved.
Second.
Crowsey and Erickson. All right, discussion?
Madam Mayor, the applicant, uh, Ken Arneson with Evergreen is, uh, in our virtual audience to answer questions.
All right. Uh, so there was a brief summary earlier of what the project is. Uh, would any council member like any further clarification on this item? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mugrour?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
Thank you, Mr. Arneson, for joining us.
Thank you all for your support. We appreciate it.
All right, next is twenty-one fifty-four, approve the budget development policy. Take a motion and a second on twenty-one fifty-four.
Still moved.
Ford and Mugrour? All right, and discussion on the budget development policy. Uh, do, uh, councilmembers Mugrour, Ford, or Mr. Van Gompo wish to open this up? Councilmember Ford?
Yes, I, I'm happy to. Just very briefly, this was approved by a long-range finance. It's part of a larger project where we're trying to get all of our, um, or ensuring that all of our financial policies are up to date. And this will give current and future council members and city staff a real clear roadmap of how to navigate our budget process. And I think more importantly ensures the public knows what to expect during our budget process and can really judge our success on that accordingly.
I just want to express appreciation for all the work that went into that because it is so important that we continue to improve, uh, the accessibility of that information. And, uh, Councilmember Ford has gone above and beyond, as has, uh, Councilmember Mugrour, to, uh, make this accessible to the public. So thank you, and Mr. Van Gompo.
Just going to say, Russ as well.
That's what I was going to add, just this is on Russ.
All right, please take the roll.
Mugrour?
Aye.
Erickson?
Aye. Aye.
Peschel?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Carrie Seven.
All right, and the last of the new resolutions, uh, twenty-one fifty-five, approve city manager performance evaluation for two thousand twenty, an amendment to employment agreement. Um, get a motion and a second, and then Deputy Mayor Crowsey can, uh, speak to this item.
Moved.
Still moved.
Peschel and Mugrour. All right, this, uh, Deputy Mayor Crowsey.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all, I want to tell everybody how thankful I am to council for stepping up and answering any questions I had, helping out, um, every little project we came up with as a team, we, we succeeded on. So it was a great team effort and one of the best ones I've been involved in, in my four years. So I appreciate that. And all of staff's help too, along the way answering questions. So we have a statement, feedback review that I'll read off. The city manager continues to work hard for the city and its citizens. He continues to remain focused on both details and the strategic plan for the city. Twenty twenty was a challenging year for the city manager and staff. First, the ransomware cyber attack in January that crashed the city's website, email and billing accounts, followed by the COVID-nineteen pandemic that gripped our city and the nation. Going to a near virtual format for all meetings for staff, boards, and commissions, along with the closing of City Hall during the peak of the pandemic. It has been a year like no other, yet he continued to demonstrate what it is to be a leader keeping the strategic plan of the city in mind and the health and well-being of the citizens of Oshkosh as his priorities. The council understands twenty twenty saw significant challenges with the budget and levy restraints imposed on the city from the state budget, yet with the diligent work by Mr. Roloff, finance director, Van Gompo, and staff, the city was able to approve a, a balanced budget while maintaining the needed services to the citizens of Oshkosh. Some enhancements includes creating a tuition assistance program for city employees and adding two much-needed positions to the water filtration and distribution department. For a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home here in Oshkosh, twenty-one property taxes will go up only around thirty-five dollars. That's less than three dollars a month, all while the city still continues improving its streets and storm sewer concerns. The council understands there will be many challenges ahead, but we are confident in the city manager's and staff's ability to continue to deal with these issues and keep Oshkosh moving forward and positioning itself for a better future, continuing to keep Oshkosh competitive in northeast Wisconsin as a place to live, work, and play. The Oshkosh Common Council has approved a five-year pay structure for the city manager, which includes a six-point-six percent pay increase for twenty twenty-one, retroactive to the first of the year, bringing his salary to one hundred seventy thousand for twenty twenty-one. This adjustment of compensation aligns with the other salaries of city managers and like government systems in Wisconsin. Years January twenty twenty-two through January twenty twenty-five, we have approved a yearly three percent increase of salary contingent on the continued standard of excellence, which hasn't been displayed over his time thus far in the role of city manager of Oshkosh. This provides stability for the city manager and to the city of Oshkosh. I'll open it up to any other council members that have comments on his performance and the year in general. Thank you.
Councilmember Mugrour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, actually, first, I want to acknowledge and thank Deputy Mayor Crowsey for his, uh, for his leadership during this process. Uh, I thought, um, honestly, point blank, I thought this was the best process we've had in the three times I've done this. Um, we had a, a great in-depth discussion. Uh, it was very collaborative, um, but really, uh, just want to say thank you to, to Deputy Mayor Crowsey for, for running this, um, for running this. So thank you very much. Um, you know, twenty twenty was a very unique year. Um, it's, it's lots of challenges, uh, but city manager Roloff, uh, at every twist and turn, uh, led us and led his staff, um, very, very well this year in a very professional and, um, thoughtful manner. Uh, you know, we came out of twenty nineteen, and not that I want to talk about, you know, sad and in bad notes, but we came out of twenty nineteen with a, uh, officer-involved injury, uh, in the line of duty. We immediately went into a, uh, ransomware attack that lasted several weeks, which crippled our systems. Um, there it was, staff pivoting, um, getting creative and providing the necessary functions and services in a very unique way. And then as, as Deputy Mayor, uh, Crowsey alluded to, then came our friend COVID and our second declared emergency, uh, for the city. And, you know, it was as if, uh, city staff, um, was just used to it at this point. They pivoted again, they got flexible, they adapted, and through his leadership and his professionalism, kept us moving through twenty twenty, um, and it has put us in a very strong position for twenty twenty-one and beyond. So, uh, you know, I'm thankful for, for Mark, his performance, uh, as well as his leadership of, of his staff, uh, and the entire organization, which reflects well upon him. And, and I know, uh, I know he won't take full credit for it, but, uh, you know, his staff is, is well-prepared to, to push us through twenty twenty-one and, and take us where we need to go. Um, you know, I know the job is never done, but just want to acknowledge that you did, it was a job well done in twenty twenty, Mark. So thank you very much.
And I'd just like to add a few things here to, um, in addition to those items that Deputy Mayor Crowsey and Councilmember Mugrour referred to, there were several other pretty substantial things in the mix of that, too. A rather tense election cycle and unprecedented numbers of absentee ballots to, uh, address as well as the physicality of how we did that, whether it was absentee or, um, in person and managing, uh, some tense moments in the community in response to national events. And, uh, you know, I could go on, I'm sure others could, could too. But through that, I'm not quite sure how Mr. Roloff was able to clone himself to get back and forth between the emergency operations center, um, under the direction of the fire chief at that point, and we are still under that state of emergency. So, um, the ability to, uh, have a professional city manager in addition to an elected mayor and seven at-large council members is, um, is something that this past year, in spite of the crises, did work. And I, I know that that can't always be seen from the outside, but we, we saw this. And trust us when we say that is earned. Others? All right, I do want to ask Deputy Mayor Crowsey, oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, just, just real quick, I mean, you all said it better than I can say it, but, uh, Deputy Mayor Crowsey did, did great here. I mean, I think that the, the people of Oshkosh really should have confidence that we had, we had an open deliberative collaborative process, um, for fulfilling our obligation to evaluate Mark. And we'll talk about it later tonight, but we also set some pretty aggressive goals, um, moving forward. So, yes, the compensation's going up. Um, yes, he's the CEO of a, of a company or a city with over five hundred employees, but he also has a lot to, a lot of work to do, uh, to earn it. And, um, I personally have all the confidence in the world that he, that he will. Looking forward to seeing him try.
Yes, that was what I was going to ask Deputy Mayor, if he would read off the goals that were set for Mr. Roloff so that the public understands what's expected.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. And like, like we said, he's getting a raise, but he's going to work really hard for that money. So here's our goals long term. Um, the first one's going to identify and pursue opportunities for the city to provide support for short and long-term solutions to reduce and end homelessness. The second one will be continuing incorporating equity and inclusion into the day-to-day operations and structures of the Oshkosh City Government. This includes implementing the recommendations of the DEI Committee and Council, working with departments to achieve their DEI-approved measurable equity and inclusion goals, and continuing community conversations with cross-section of the Oshkosh community. The third one, provide options to analyze, prioritize, prioritize, and address the comprehensive facilities needs of the city of Oshkosh. And finally, the fourth one, to use all the resources of the city manager's office, partnering with colleagues and stakeholders to lobby our state legislature to reduce the funding gap under the municipal service payment program. And like I said earlier before, in our closed session workshops, as a council, we worked together, rainstormed, and came up with these goals to best direct our city manager and to, in our opinion, to have a better city's future. And we're confident in his performance in the past and into the future. So if anybody wants to comment on any of the goals, now would be the time. Thank you.
Councilmember Mugrour. And then, uh, Mr. Peschel, did you have your hand up also?
Yes.
All right, Mugrour, then Peschel.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, um, just briefly on the goals, uh, Deputy Mayor Crowsey is absolutely correct it was a collaborative process, but these align with our strategic plan. Uh, these are long-term goals. They will not be achieved quickly or easily. Um, but we believe that, uh, the city manager of Oshkosh, Mark Roloff, is well poised to, to tackle these, to try to bring in as many partners as possible to keep moving us forward and to better us. So, um, you know, I'm, I'm well hap, I'm very happy with what we put together as, as goals for him to, to try to achieve in twenty twenty-one and beyond.
Thank you, Deputy Crowsey. And, uh, go ahead, Mr. Peschel, please.
Sure, thank you. Want to echo what Mr. Mugrour stated in regards to the collaborative approach of the, of the goals. Um, the discussion about the goals took over about two week, time, two separate meetings. Um, we collaborated out, uh, outside just to kind of make sure that our goals were written in the way that we wanted them to be written, and then we came back and we talked about, um, and then, and then, you know, brought them to Mr. Roloff, who, um, amazingly said, "I'll do it. Oh, I want to continue serving Oshkosh. I want to make Oshkosh a better community. Um, you throw whatever goals at me, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna do my best to make it happen." Um, and, and to be honest with you, that's, that's the amazing thing that we saw about Mark Roloff in the last year. Um, it really is, is his ability to pivot, delegate, and to move the city forward in several instances of challenges, um, that we call twenty twenty. So, um, but, uh, I think it's important that, that these are not goals that we're forcing upon Mark. These are goals that he acknowledged that our community needs to work on and that he wants, either has the skills or wants to get the skills, to get the skills to, to to get the skills to, to improve these areas within our community. And acknowledging that it also, how it also impacts or impacts our long-term strategic plan as well. So Mark, thank you. It's, it's appreciated. Your service is appreciated. I'll be off in April, but there'll be a couple of ones that I come back to you for, just to kind of keep you to get your updates on them and to see where you are with them. Thank you for your service and please continue forward with the heart that you've already provided now for, you know, however long that you're with us.
All right. Let's please take the, oh, I'm sorry. Was there another hand that just went up? No. All right. It was Deputy Mayor Crowsey.
I just wanted to give Mr. Roloff the chance to speak on any issues or any comments we made.
Well, I, I wanted to wait until after the vote, so I didn't blow it for me. But since you've given me the opportunity, you know, I'm, I'm humbled, appreciative and excited at the same time to be able to continue to serve the city of Oshkosh, the council, a great staff. There are a lot of people that are hiding behind a name on the screen here, but you know, you don't get this stuff done in a challenging year without the assistance. The council, the staff and a very patient and understanding community because this has been a challenging year. I think part of the reason I welcome these goals is because I would prefer to be working on these substantive issues for our community rather than chasing viruses that have either of the medical or computer kind. So I, I look forward to working on these issues. I look forward to serving the council in our community. And, and I had, I couldn't help when Jake made a comment earlier. He said, work hard for the money. And now I got Donna Summer running through my head, working hard for the money. Some of you may not get that, but some of you did laugh. So I appreciate you getting the joke from the guy who lived in the seventies and eighties. So thank you very much.
All right. Let's take the roll.
Mooker Hour.
Hi.
Erickson.
Hi.
Paschal.
Hi.
Ford.
Councilmember Ford.
Oh, I didn't hear you. Sorry. Hi.
Allison Osby.
Hi.
Crowsey.
Hi.
Paul Mary.
Hi.
Jerry Seven.
All right. We're now at the council discussion, direction to city manager, future agenda items. Future agenda items. We have a blank there. Were there some items that had been maybe left off or?
No, Madam Mayor, they, we received nothing in particular for specific agenda items, but for future workshops, I did want to throw out something now that the council has formally adopted the goals. I think it would be appropriate for us to try to have some meeting with our legislators to explain the unique nature of how the municipal services payment program impacts us. I don't need to tell council because they've, you know, you've put it in there as a goal, but engaging our legislators to understand that this issue is very real. This is not just about Madison and Milwaukee and we need to do something, as you know. So I would like to reach out and try to schedule something and I'll have Diane reach out to you if this is something. I suspect that this is something council would like to do.
And you know, while we have him at the table, maybe we could chew on the the other goal regarding ending homelessness.
We can certainly bring up anything and everything. Let me reach out and see if I can schedule something and I'll have Diane contact each of you to look for some potential dates that we can figure out a way to, to have this be substantive.
Sure, sure.
It's just tough with, you know, as we all know, but you know, we had a fairly successful meeting with the school district and we're going to talk about that in a moment anyway. And so it's not impossible. It's just challenging.
All right. Thank you. And then there's a follow-up to the joint workshop that we had with the Oshkosh Area School District.
Really just a matter of I believe the input we received from the, from the meeting was that the school board was willing to entertain a, a more equitable cost-sharing arrangement for our school resource officer program. So Superintendent Cartwright and I will be meeting shortly and I, I envisioned this similar to how we did it with busing initially. But it seemed like everybody was on the same page in terms of understanding the, the finances of it and and that we want to continue it. So I will be reaching out to Superintendent Cartwright. The, you know, the issue about the schools, it sounds like the school is very willing to, to work closely with us. The mayor and I were contacted by a resident of nearby Webster Stanley School. And you know, I'm sure we're going to be getting things like that because new building is going to create, you know, a lot of dust, both literally and figuratively. And we need to work closely with the school district and Superintendent Cartwright and I have, have already had those discussions, but I, I will say for the general benefit of the public, everything that you've seen from the school district up to now is all conceptual. So we still have not been giving any direct input into that as they develop more solid plans, we'll be providing input and I've already, we've already received comments as the mayor can attest. And so we'll be working with them on that. And then there were a couple of other items that the some of the school board members and council members had raised. One was mental health issues. And you know, I think it might be appropriate if we're going to be talking about that topic because the city doesn't have any direct involvement in mental health issues. We have indirect certainly with our public safety folks. But there may, it may be appropriate to bring in the county to have this discussion as well. So I mentioned that just to, if we're going to have a discussion about that, which is a very real issue in the schools, what, what we can do to help address that.
All right. So we are now at council member announcements and statements, any reports on council liaison for boards and commissions? I just have two. Oh, I'm sorry. Was, is there an echo? All right. I, I just have two. East Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, we went over the this was for the regional comprehensive planning, the 2021 work plan and budget, and then the draft strategic plan. And then this Friday, I'll, I'll be back on for the full commission for our regular quarterly. Diversity, Equity and Inclusion met just last night. We had an excellent presentation and interaction with the Amadea Mosque. And they gave a presentation and there was a wonderful dialogue that followed that. And some of the concerns that came out of the DEI meeting last night were the city messaging about COVID vaccine accessibility. And, and again, this is another area where we have that overlap with the county, but concerns about consistent messaging, similar to what we experienced earlier in the year with regard to, you know, some of the other hygiene practices. So that's all I have for, for meetings to review. Does anybody else have any to share? All right then. City manager announcements and statements. Mr. Roloff?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just turning the page. We have a couple cooperative purchases that are on the agenda there. Some trucks for the Sign Division Fire Department. So we have those. Those are all cooperative through the state. We have the fourth quarter update to the strategic plan. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. I know we have a, you know, a later meeting because of the closed sessions, but the one thing I want to point out is that, you know, there, there are always disruptions, especially this year, but most of the disruptions that were identified in the strategic plan were either COVID-related in the public safety realm. One of the ones that got disrupted were neighborhood meetings where, and national night out and things like that. Others were conscious decisions in terms of facilities, prioritizing facilities and museum, for example, was one that got put back on the, on the, in the queue for when that can be done. But obviously council with goal number three recognizes those things. So even though it's shown as a disruption in our strategic plan, you know, council is very aware of that and is, is continuing to move forward on that. So I think that's what you have to do with your strategic plan, be nimble enough to, to move when, when circumstances change and financial considerations are a huge part of that. I'm not sure if there are any specific questions, but this was the final quarter of our two-year strategic plan. Most of the items you'll see were on track is a lot of this becomes ongoing type of thing. So it's not that we didn't accomplish it. It's that it's kind of a never-ending responsibility that we have, whether it's, you know, community risk reduction or or anything with promoting the city and things like that. I mean, all those things are ongoing. We should never be resting for those types of things. I'm happy to answer any questions if you might have. And I can even, we can do that offline as well if you'd prefer, but any questions?
Uh, let's see here. I guess the only thing would be on the outstanding issues.
Okay.
Yes.
We can go to outstanding issues. Thank you.
You were asking if we had any questions on the fourth quarter.
Strategic plan.
Plan.
Yeah.
And, and thank you for getting that out to us ahead of time so we could actually spend some, a little bit of time on it. Appreciate the KPI work that the staff's been working on there too. But yeah, outstanding issues. Would you like to report on that?
Yes, thank you. Obviously, the big one from last meeting was the transitional housing. City Attorney Lawrenson provided you with a memo explaining, you know, how we're approaching the draft ordinance. We believe we'll have it finalized and drafted by February 2nd. And the one thing that I neglected to mention last time that staff pointed out to me was because it's a zoning code issue that is required to go through the plan commission first. So there's an extra level of participation that the public can afford themselves to. I did provide a copy of Attorney Lawrenson's memo to the representatives over at, on Jefferson Street as, as we promised them. And we'll certainly make them aware that the ordinance will be discussed at, assuming that we get it done by February 2nd, which right now I have every belief we will, it would be on the February 16th Plan Commission Agenda. And the first reading of two for council would be on February 23rd, followed by March 9th would be the final. So that gives you an idea. City Attorney is available if you've got any questions about the memo itself. Cause I know there was a little bit of question from, you know, a resident or two about the grandfathering part of it. It's kind of a legal thing. It looks like Mr. Mooker Hour, at least I'm looking real quick at the Brady Bunch screen. So I know Councilmember Mooker Hour has a question, but that's, that's all I see right now.
Yes, Mr. Mooker Hour.
So thank you, Madam Mayor. On this topic, and I appreciate the memo from City Attorney as well as, you know, the the information in enough time to digest it, to have discussions. I think, I think it'd be appropriate to have the police chief, Chief Smith also weigh in on this, at least provide a memo in terms of his thoughts and the implications it has with placement of those types of individuals. And what I'm getting at is we might think something is all well and good, but then the actual real-world effects that it will have in terms of placement of individuals and, and within our community and just the secondary effects of it. So I wouldn't mind having his, his thoughts when we take that up as well, just to consider.
Yeah, there were, you know, there were a couple of items. And thanks to City Attorney Lawrenson for being very thorough and detailed. There were a couple of things I had questions on too, that I hope to follow up with separately, just kind of questions about some of the other communities and some of the other data that was referenced that, that you mentioned, Councilmember Mooker Hour from, from Chief Smith. So thanks for bringing that up. All right. There's another item on the outstanding issues that we promised the public that we would bring back if needed. I don't know if we have had any news on a vote at the state level by the legislature on the statewide mask requirements. Has anyone heard any news, Mr. Roloff?
At this point, no, but my crystal ball tells me that I think the legislature is going to overturn Governor Evers mask order. That's just, my, my crystal ball is as good as any of yours, but I think that if that's the case, I think the city attorney said, let's just, you know, not rush to an ordinance. Let's see if the legislature does something that may or may not require us to act differently with it. And I think she wants to get an opportunity to, to review that. But we have a draft, but it's subject to change based on whatever happens. Is that a fair, generally a fair statement, Lynn, from your standpoint?
We do have a draft done. If the legislature does something, we might need to adjust that draft.
So that's, that's our plan at this point. I guess my, we're going to be transitioning to COVID-19 update really soon, but regardless of it's mandated or not, masks are widely proven to be effective. They are not perfect, but they are effective. And I would encourage the public to continue to do that. You look at everything that we're getting from our local providers. Our, our local doctors, people who, who take care of us. They're the ones saying we need to do, we need to continue to do masks regardless. And that's going to be the message we need. It's not because we're required to, it's because, you know, we should do. So I think that's going to be part of the messaging. And staff will be working on that, basically confirming what our health experts have been saying. We're so close because vaccines are here. They're just, you know, slowly trickling out, but we're so close. Let's not, let's not let's not blow it as we're getting close to it. So there's my message for today, but council had said bring it back. So we'll, we'll plan to bring it back after we do a review.
And I'm glad you brought that up. This kind of blends into the COVID-19 update. Another thing that came out of the diversity, equity and inclusion committee meeting last night was a site that none of us knew about, maybe some of you already did, that's called EndTheRona.com. That's to sign up for text alerts when the vaccine is available in your area at CBS, Walgreens, Walmart, Costco, those kinds of places. So that was something that I, I think Mr. Fitzpatrick was going to discuss about putting on our COVID resources on our city webpage too. Certainly it would be really nice if we could also see where the locations within the city limits are being set up for public vaccinations as those supplies become available. So is Chief Stanley here for the COVID-19 update?
I see the fire department shield, so I'm hoping he's behind it. Chief Stanley, I was unable to make the Emergency Operations Center meeting this morning, so I'm not sure if there's any updates. I guess the biggest questions these days are obviously with, with vaccines.
Sure, absolutely. The, the good news is that the testing at UWO has been able to be extended, so we'll So they should be able to continue to test for, for COVID into April. And the National Guard testing at Sunny View Expo Center has continued to be extended into March. So we still have those resources available to us. And then starting here in the immediate future, the National Guard will be doing some pilot programs here at Sunny View to try to expand the capacity for vaccinations so that we can capture the rest of the, those falling in the 1A category and transition into 1B. And then may have seen the announcement from DHS that came out this afternoon that they are starting to clarify what other categories fall into 1B. You know, so some other essential workers, such as educators, but, you know, more relevant for the city, are utility workers, transportation workers, you know, fall into that essential category for 1B, so that we should be able to start moving towards getting more of our city employees vaccinated as well. You know, still not a, a known timeline for when, you know, whole-scale wide vaccinations to the community will happen, you know, here locally or even nationally. So, you know, that, as Mr. Roloff alluded to, you know, we're close. You know, the vaccine is, is here. It's starting to be distributed. You know, we're starting to see people receive their second vaccine in that 1A category already. So, you know, that, that hope is on the horizon.
And I would say that I was on a, a meeting with league leadership, as well as the Department of Health Services. And the Department of Health Services came out today with clarifying for what, who's on 1B. And 911 operators have been added. Utility and communications infrastructure, so utility workers were somebody that we felt needed to be identified because of their vital need to provide water to our communities. And then public transit was also added to that group as well. There were some others that we had added. We expressed concern about election workers. That did not fall into the 1B list, but we're going to continue to emphasize that. So our 1B list, we're working through to get them vaccinated with, with our partners in the healthcare industry. But obviously, with it opening up to 65 to 74-year-olds, that is about a group of about 700,000 people. And we are getting 70,000 vaccines per week into the state. So if you do the math, that's a 10-week process. Clearly, we need a bigger supply. And we're hoping that the healthcare system is preparing all these things so that we're ready to go. And I know the Health Department in the, in UWO have been working on a location so that they can do vaccines. So I know there's things going on behind the scenes. I don't have all the details for those items. I don't know how much Chief is aware. He's probably a little more aware than me. But, you know, we obviously have a long way to go. And 70,000 a week isn't going to cut it. We're going to need more. So Chief, I don't know if you've got anything to add to that.
No, I concur. You know, that's, while we're seeing plans built for delivery, you know, the, the big holdup is just amount of vaccine. You know, that's, the Health Department reported this morning that, you know, they went from initially getting 200 vaccines a week to 300. They're up to 500 now, you know. So they're increasing the number of vaccine they're receiving. But, you know, in a community of, just in Oshkosh, of nearly 70,000, let alone the whole county, you know, 500 vaccines a week, that's going to take a while. You know, so until we see, you know, as Mr. Roloff said, increased delivery, you know, increased access to vaccine, you know, that's, you know, I love that the mayor's comment about, you know, being able to go to CVS and Walgreens and get it. You know, I mean, that's where we need to be as a community and as, you know, a nation. Or just, just not there yet. You know, so we'll keep you appraised as, you know, we know more and when we're able to have a sufficient supply chain to start making those significant jumps.
Councilmember Mugerhour?
Thank you, Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. I think, and I wonder what my fellow colleagues think of this, but might it be appropriate to invite County Health Director Guren to one of our next, our next meeting? We can put him on the front end. He doesn't have to wait till the end. He doesn't have to listen to our whole show. But put him on the front end and allow him to speak right to the residents of Oshkosh. It doesn't have to even be a full Q and A. I'll even shut up the whole time. But to let him speak to the people of Oshkosh in regards to the who, the how, and the what regarding the vaccine and get it right from the guy who's running the show in this county. And I know that, you know, they're trying their best in terms of communications. Not everybody's receiving it the same way. And I think it might be beneficial for him to come, come speak, and people hear, see it right from his mouth. So I don't know what you guys think, but I'd like to hear it from him to, I'd like to hear him speak to us.
Yes, I'd, I'd certainly support that. And at the front end so that his time's respected and, you know, maybe the whole COVID-19 update could be at the front end and, and Chief Stanley could go home early that night.
Don't get his hopes up. We'd be happy to do that. Thank you for the suggestions, mayor and council members. We can, we can certainly do that. That's really all I have.
All right.
With my report.
So Deputy Mayor Crowsey, we have a couple of motions for going into closed session or a motion to go into closed session. I'm going to ask council members, we're already at 8:15. Shall we take a 10 or 15-minute recess before going into that next round? Ben? Okay. 10. All right. Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that following the adjournment of this meeting, that the council convened in a closed session to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the negotiation of an agreement for the redevelopment of Morgan District pursuant to Section 19.851E of Wisconsin State statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session. And to discuss bargaining options, strategy, parameters, and terms related to the negotiation of an agreement for the redevelopment of the Miles Kimball redevelopment pursuant to Section 19.851E of the Wisconsin State statutes where competitive bargaining reasons require a closed session.
Thank you.
Take the roll.
Mugerhour?
Hi.
Erickson?
Aye.
Pashal?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Jerry Seven?
All right. So let's join our other meeting then at 8:20. Motion to adjourn. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Do you mean at 8:30?
Yes.
Okay.
8:30. But we need our motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. Pashal and Ford. All right. Let's take the roll.
Mugerhour?
Hi.
Erickson?
Aye.
Pashal?
Hi.
Ford?
Hi.
Allison Osby?
Aye.
Crowsey?
Aye.
Paul Mary?
Aye.
Jerry Seven? We are adjourned.
All right. Thank you.